Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Why the states. The republic.
The republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
For God.
Invisible.
Liberty.
Justice for all. Thank you. Are we doing a student report tonight, Mr. Superintendent?
We are not.
We are not. School committee chair report. I have nothing to report. Resource committee. Mr. Stevens. Okay, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, school building needs. Mr. Stevens, once again.
The only thing, Craig, give an update on Crocker Elementary School.
Craig, are you doing that during the meeting? You do that now?
No, we're gonna do the facilities later.
Right.
Okay. Got it. Policy committee. Mr. Horgan.
Yeah, brief report. We just had a meeting today and we passed the face coverings policy that is before you tonight, just about an hour ago. So we'll be going over that. It's just our district's mandate for masks, the exceptions, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll be going over that soon.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, moving on to student support subcommittee. Ms. LaBelle Peters.
Nothing new to report.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Personal subcommittee. I have nothing to report. Nothing with the executive committee as well. Looking at student executive session. We will be going into executive session for the purpose of purpose of negotiations. Any communications?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Mayor.
No. Seeing none, superintendent. Anyone wishing to, oh, Ms. Cragan.
Yes, as the second oldest person in the room here.
Thank you.
Stevens got it. Who's the oldest, right?
Yeah, so I have a very, I'm really thrilled to announce the following. Stratton Players is going to be doing a historic walking tour. And we're gonna be doing that in the spring, so we will have an audience that is socially distanced. I am going to be basically doing a lot of research and creating theater where folks will be reenacting, reenacting the characters of the past. We're hoping to do this at Forest Hill, so we'll be in touch with Nick and we'll be in touch with the mayor's office to finalize dates and this and that, but looking to do this probably the third weekend of April. I am so happy to be doing some kind of theater again. And we're gonna have, we'll have kids involved as well, so I'd love to get kids and teens involved and we'll report in as we're able to, but this will be Pittsburgh history, including having someone reenact Faye Crocker, who was the founding member of Stratton Players with Ms. Helen Stratton, longtime English teacher at Pittsburgh High School back in the 20s. So I can barely remember this. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make a public comment?
We have no question.
No one registered?
Nope.
All right. Moving on to superintendent's report. Mr. Jokel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight we have a return to school update planned along with, that it does include the engineering assessment debrief, some grants and the face mask policy that Mr. Horgan referred to. So I'm going to share my screen and begin the presentation.
Bye. Keep them up.
Hey. My TV screen here. So here we go. So tonight we have, while it looks like a lengthy agenda, this will really be brief updates from a variety of individuals. First, we'll have Steve Curry, the director of Board of Health, give an overview of the COVID situation in Pittsburgh. I'll give a little preamble in regards to the state DPH statistics. We have Eva Kelly to provide an update on enrollment, particularly the kindergarten enrollment and communication, also updating the community on attendance, schedules, special education, and then really to kind of close out with some infrastructure topics, technology and facilities. So I want to welcome Mr. Curry, Director of our Board of Health, to the school committee meeting. And Steve, can you take it away from here and I will be your slide mover?
Hello, Mr. Curry.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Terrific. Good evening all. I'll start over again. I apologize for that. Here you are looking at the state map. Pittsburgh for those last several weeks, other than one week, I believe we made into yellow, which is the four to eight cases per 100,000, but for the most part, we have remained in the green, which is, which is less than four cases per 100,000 population. And those statistics are prepared by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Folks, this graph, the gray line sort of shows the last two weeks of testing results. As you can see around the 5th of August, it's the, this is a graph showing positivity. So around August 5th, our positivity rate was basically a little under 1.5% during mid-August. During mid-August, it shot up to almost a little under 2.5%. Currently, right now, as of September 8, we are just a hair under 1% at 0.97. So this is positivity rate. So basically, it's the average of the amount of positives that come out of all COVID testing going on in Pittsburgh. I'm gonna pause for a moment so I can plug my computer in so I make sure I don't lose you. I apologize for that delay. This graph is a graph showing COVID cases from July 1st to September 11th. This is showing that we have a 3.1 incident rate. Basically, that means per 100,000 people, we are seeing three cases a day in the last 14 days. The blue is the confirmed cases since July 1st. So you see, the largest number of cases was five back on, I believe that's July 9. And then we see upwards of five cases plus one probable around August 10th, but it's been pretty consistent, as you can see, from July, right around three to five cases daily. Average confirmed cases, or these graphs are getting smaller, I'm getting old. I think the school department would be very interested in the 5 to 18 range. And I believe that's about 20% of the cases, which is 13 cases, if I'm seeing that correctly. Something to monitor for, obviously, for our future. This graph shows, very interestingly enough, the gray line is active cases in the city within the last two weeks, from August 28th to September 11th, which was Friday. So you can see a little bit of an upswing. And then presently, as of this morning, we had one active case in the city. It's been pretty consistent, other than around the beginning of September, we did see a little bit of spike. But I caution people to pay, real pay close attention to these numbers because oftentimes, these numbers are a bit skewed because a lot of people are doing the rapid testing and that has 30 to 33% false positive rate. So a lot of those cases, you'll see around September 8, there was almost 12, I believe it's 13 cases. Many of those actually turned out negative later on, so thus the huge drop down in our active cases. You'll also see the confirmed cases from August 28th to last Friday. It looks like they're all coming in just a matter of a couple of days here and there. But it's really not consistent, three, but the average is a hair over three. Confirmed case ages from August 28th, it looks like we've had two cases since then. This pie graph gives you a rough idea of the testing, and that's also within the last two weeks. So 1% of all testing is testing positive out of 2,656 tests. So that's kind of promising. The encouragement now is to go get tested. So it seems like people are still doing that.
Hey, Steve, this is, I guess, do you have any more comments in regards to any of the data that was presented?
So all I can say right now, on top of that, is since March 1st, we've seen about, as of this morning, we've had a total of 875 cases. We've had 80 deaths in the city. A bulk, the greater percentage of those deaths are from facilities, long-term facilities, long-term camp facilities. In that, we've had about 725 people recover. And as I mentioned before, we have currently one active case. But we do have two to three cases that came in this afternoon that we are currently interviewing, so more information to follow on that. That's, unless there's questions, that's really all I have to add to that.
Does anybody have a question for Mr. Curry?
I have a question. On one of the communications that the Commissioner, Commissioner Riley has sent out, you know, he talks to districts about using a variety of criteria, so positivity rate and the
Incident rate.
Incident rate, okay. So the other, the third one I'm trying to understand, like, is where it's, a trend is increasing or it's decreasing, but how do you, like, what are they looking at for metrics when they're measuring that trend? Are they looking at like a 14-day period? Are they looking at a day-to-day period? I mean, I don't really understand how to figure that one out.
So the incident rate is based on 100,000, and that would be the number of cases on average we get within the last 14 days. And that's sort of the graph that, maybe we can go back to it if it's not too difficult.
Yeah, that one, that one was based on 3.1?
Yeah, so that is our current incident rate. The graph before that one would be our positivity rate. So the incident rate is the number of cases per 100,000. And the positivity rate is the number of cases testing positive out of the total number of positive tests, I'm sorry, the total number of tests. So it's the total number of positives taken out of the total number of tests. So as you can see, since mid-August, that, that is trending downward. Currently.
So basically, then, I guess that communication is to look at all of your rates and see what the trend is, if it's increasing.
Absolutely. And in the next slide, you see that the incident rate has been around 2.5 to 3.1. So it's, it's for the Department of Odessa is, I believe, set the number at 5%. I don't believe they have, unless that has changed, Mr. Jokel might be able to answer that, but I don't believe they have identified which rate they are looking at when they say the 5%. But obviously, we'd be monitoring both of them, and if either one of them got to the 5%, that's when we start making tough decisions.
Could I ask you another thing, Mr. Curry? If one of the things that they said in that guidance that Superintendent Jokel has shared out today was that, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Oh, was that you shouldn't be making a decision based on, like, one week or whatever, but I'm just kind of curious because, let's say you had, I don't know, you said you had two cases today that came in, or two to three cases that came in today.
Right.
So if, if, if I, as a school committee member, am looking at a trend and I say it's down, right, but just for hypothetical quest, you know, purpose here, if those two to three cases are positive and based on, I don't know, like, what, I guess I'm trying to ask, what could be maybe a problem, like, not making a judgment based on that week's information? I get that we want to see a whole picture, but I was just a little taken aback by that advice today because I thought, well, if you, I mean, this stuff's, it moves quickly, right? Like, so why should you act on the newest information?
You are correct in that these numbers can change probably in one or two days. I think, and this is why I threw five or six graphs at you, is I don't want to make decisions based on one, but obviously, for you folks, I think we pay very attention, very close attention to the incident rate, the positivity rate, as well as the age group that is testing positive. And it's also important for, important for us to monitor households if, 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 if there are possibly elderly people living in the children's home. That's something that the health department is really gonna have to pay attention to, to help you folks out to make good decisions.
Do you have that information?
We interview every case.
Okay.
And we would, if we were to have a positive case, we would identify every household member. They would automatically be ordered quarantine. And we would take the names and ages of every household member. So it's very important if we have elderly living with families right now and, and they're testing, or any household member for that matter, if their children in the, in the in the household, we need to identify that for you folks and to make sure that those kids aren't going to school, obviously.
Thank you.
It's a lot of information to be thrown up, thrown out at you. And
May I ask? May I ask you a question? It's Rosemary here. How does, how does this compare with Leominster and Say Gardner? Have you any idea? You seeing the same thing, basically?
Leominster is very similar, yes. Gardner actually has been a little bit less. Surprisingly, I don't know why. But Gardner has not come out of the gray section. In the, in the first map, it showed all the towns in Massachusetts. Gardner has, I don't believe they have ever entered any of the green or yellows, which are lower risk, but but they have not escalated. And I guess you could credit them to doing a good job to keep the cases down.
Thank you.
You've just a question, a comment. Pittsburgh State is back in school, and it doesn't look like it's affected your numbers at this time. As I go by the college, I see the kids, the young people there being very responsible with their masks on. So I was just wondering, anything with the college?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. We have had four cases at Pittsburgh State University. Many of those cases were, occurred before school had even started, but a couple of those cases, only one out of four was an actual Pittsburgh resident. But we were, the college is doing an excellent job of, and maybe this is something to take back to the school, the college is doing an excellent job of monitoring where people go. When you go to a certain office, you are to sign in, and that really helped with contact tracing as to where people went and who they had contact with.
Could I ask a couple of questions about Pittsburgh State? So if you said one
Before we do that, can I say something about Pittsburgh State, just for your own edification? If anyone's, I'm sure there were people interested. Tomorrow night's city council meeting, President Lepidus and Vice President Lara Bayless are gonna be presenting exactly where Pittsburgh State is with addressing the, the needs of the pandemic, so how they're bringing students back, all the particulars. So you might want to tune in, and that may answer a lot of your questions.
Well, thank you for that. In the counting of the cases, you said there have been four and one, one person lived in Pittsburgh, so the other three, I have two parts to that question. Do they live as residents on campus? And then it doesn't count as a Pittsburgh infection? Is it, it counts for their town's infection? Is that how that works?
Luckily, we work very closely with Leominster and they, their public health nurse happens to be leaving, so our public health nurses are monitoring Leominster. But those, there were two cases from Leominster. I believe the other one was a Gardner case. So we were able to track those individuals. They are commuters, by the way. And not one of them lives on the campus. They do live in a nearby apartment, but not one of them lives in the dorms at Pittsburgh State University.
I'll definitely watch the city council, but do you, are you aware, is Pittsburgh State testing their students on a regular basis?
Yes, they have contracted with a testing company. They're, they're testing staff, employees in, I'm sorry, residents and the commuters on a regular basis, weekly.
Thank you.
They are required to.
Okay, I think if there are no further questions, Steve, I guess, just as we transition to the reopening, you know, one thing I've said repeatedly to the school committee and a variety of other forums is, you know, Pittsburgh and Massachusetts as a state are in a much better position than we were in March, April and May as a result of practicing, you know, several of these actions here, social distancing, washing hands, sanitizing, cleaning, disinfecting, wearing face masks, and also, if you're sick, not feeling well, stay home. So this has really been, I think, a collective effort, showing what people can do in the face of a pandemic. And again, I think, you know, Massachusetts is the envy and of many states around the country in terms of where we're at. So I think we just have to stay vigilant and continue practicing good habits to stop the spread. So
Just the thought occurred to me. Is Steve still there? There is he gone? Steve Curry, was that Steve Curry with the health department? Steve, the term herd. You thinking of these cases in terms of the herd, does it indicate that the herd is warding off new cases? Does it apply in any way?
It's really difficult to put any sort of regularity on this. I have seen holidays where we've seen a spike approximately eight to 14 days afterwards. Luckily, we don't have any major holidays again until November, which is a holiday that brings people together, but you really can tell when people let their guard down by the numbers, and the holidays have definitely done that. And I think that's why you see the spike in our graphs, but other than that, it's really difficult to put any regularity into this.
Okay, I just
That is a good question. I apologize.
Well, sort of. I didn't know the effect of the herd. I was just looking, just, you know, see if you had anything on that. Okay.
Okay. Steve, thanks for being available tonight and look forward to having you back at another meeting with, hopefully, continued good results.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So I'd like to have Eva Kelly join us to give a little bit of a update on the enrollment, starting with the kindergarten enrollment, talking about our general enrollment. And lastly, concluding with a conversation, some new interpretation services tools, so we can better communicate with our families.
So thank you for having me here tonight. So I'm going to first, as Mr. Jokel has said, go over our kindergarten numbers right now. As you can see from the graph that's on the slideshow right now, our kindergarten numbers go up and down, but this year we are pretty low. We're at 278 as of Friday. After all the inputs from Friday, we do have some pending, so we have a few more coming in. But I just wanted to point that out to you, that this is pretty low. I think Mr. Jokel did tell me today that this is common across the Commonwealth. Is that what you're hearing?
Yes, it's not only common across the Commonwealth. I think this is common also across the country, this trend.
So I don't know if you have any questions about this graph. It's pretty straightforward. We go on to the next one?
Yep.
So this is just a comparison of general enrollment pre-K to 12 between last September 25th, 2019, and Friday, or today, really. I updated it this morning. So I'm just pointing out again, the kindergarten, we're down 148 from last year. And our numbers are a bit down. If you look at the total, I can tell you, I looked through, and we have about 79 other enrollment packets pending, so either they're missing some forms or they are just haven't been processed yet. So really, without considering the high school, the real number, including the packets that are pending, would be 5,344 right now, but that's still a little low from last year. But I, just to be honest with you, these numbers are gonna shift and change every day for the next couple of weeks, pretty dramatically, so.
Eva, Eva, with those, with those kindergarten kids, that 140, is just that they're simply keeping kids home? Is that what it is?
That's the
Or are they enrolling in other, other, you know, private schools, that Or are they enrolling in other, other, you know, private schools, that kind of thing?
I, some might be enrolling in private schools, but I think predominantly it's just people are keeping their children home.
Right.
Because they're anxious. I did want to mention also about the kindergarten, just so you're aware. We have of that 278 students as of this morning. A hundred of those students, a hundred, oh, thanks, thanks. I forgot we did another slide. So the 106 of the 291, because that includes the pending students. Their home language surveys indicated to us that there is a second language spoken at home other than English. And these students will be screened for ESL services. So not all of them will become limited English proficient students. But that's how many students we have to test. And that testing is going on now at all the elementary schools.
Eva, this is Jim. I have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
Regarding regarding the kindergarten students. When we do go to a hybrid format, do you know now of the 291, how many will be in person? And how many will be remote?
I do not know that off the top of my head, Jim, but can I, can I forward you that information?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just curious. Thank you.
I don't know if anyone else might know that. Anyone else on the meeting?
No, we, we do have that information. We can get it back. We can get it too, Jim.
Yeah, any, any more questions? So the next thing I wanted to talk to you about, we have this great opportunity to increase our parent outreach and engagement. The Department of Education has invited us to participate in the Language Interpretation Services Project. There's two parts to this project. One is a free online telephonic interpretation services. That's available to anyone in the district to reach out to families that have a language other than English that is spoken at home. It can be used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's simply calling into a 1-800 number and entering our district code. And you're connected with an interpreter. They have over 380 languages that they're able to interpret for us. And they will help the person calling to patch in the other party. You can also use it if you're meeting with someone face to face by using a conferencing mode on your phone. And the second part of the project is interpretation, interpreter training. Through the Translation Center at UMass Amherst. And they've offered to train three people in the fall and three in the spring for us to have in the school buildings. The goal, you know, being again, to be able to engage our families and communicate with them. And a two-way communication process so they can ask questions and we can provide them with information and vice versa. And the interpretation training is to increase the capacity for us to have interpreters at all our buildings. So I just put this slide up because it's really, I just wanted to show you how easy this is. Really simple. You call the number, enter the PIN that's on the left side of the page. And you can select zero for the operator or you choose from a list of languages. If your language isn't on the list, you just wait for the operator and tell them what language you need and you're connected right to an interpreter. It's pretty amazing. And then they can patch in the parent for you. These are just some of the topics that they go over in the interpreter training piece of the project. So the first, the people we send will be bilingual and they do, first, they assess their language capacity. And their second language. And then they just go over different ideas and things for interpreters to keep in mind. You know, translating in a school setting and maintaining confidentiality. How to stay calm under stressful situations as, you know, some conversations can become heated. When people are becoming passionate about their children and educators becoming passionate about their jobs. I think that's my last slide.
That is, Eva, thank you. Any questions for Eva before we move on?
Eva, could you just send us the enrollment information?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll get, yep, and I'll get the split for the hybrid and in-person kinder too. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? I'm good.
Okay, moving on. So the remainder of this report, we're going to give just an update or reminder to the community on. You know, what, what the expectations are this fall, how they're a little bit different than the spring. I guess, and first of all, we want to go over the, you know, the school attendance and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. Now are requiring that students must be at school or school-related activity or receiving academic instruction for at least half the day to be counted as present. Students who are not physically present at school but are receiving academic instruction from the district for half a day should be counted as present. So the examples of academic construction include tutoring, online learning or remote learning or distance learning. Again, as a reminder for the community, we wanted to just reiterate, repeat the school start times. For the various grade levels, elementary schools start at 8:30 and at 2:50. Middle schools, same 8:30 and 2:50 start. Goodrich Academy, 12:15 to 7:25. And Pittsburgh High School has a little bit later start where they start at 8:30 and conclude their day at 3:05. Roy, do you want to give a little bit of a summary on the special education here?
And Alicia can. So the plan is to bring in our substantially separate classroom students October 5th. And those are the students whose parents have chosen the hybrids. So some have chosen. To stay remote. So we're in the process of working with schools to get final numbers on that. Unless you want to talk about the special education evaluations?
Sure. So we've begun some of the special education evaluations. Some of them are evaluations that weren't able to be completed during the shutdown after, in March. So we're catching up and starting the current evaluations as well. Students will be evaluated individually in the schools. Some are doing outside testing and some are doing inside testing with LPE requirements. All team meetings will be virtual unless for some reason a parent does not have access. And then we can make arrangements with the parent. And teachers and special education administrators will be contacting all parents to develop learning plans. Which, you know, we're required to provide all the services to students, but this will help define, better define how. And, you know, because some of them might look different than they have in the past.
So, any questions? Having none, continue to move on. Technologies, Eileen, is any with us?
I don't think she is, Bob.
She's not? All right, well, we can, we can do that. So, you know, one of, one of the things that we've been working diligently is to, number one. Make sure students, you know, entering school or starting school today. Have both an access to a device, Chromebook, and also hotspots. As of right now, we, we believe that we should have enough Chromebooks for, for our students. And again, we do have some more. Hotspots in the queue. We did distribute about 150 Chromebooks to families on Saturday. Who are scheduled to receive them this week. They were able to get the Chromebooks in their hands before the start of school, which was great. And again, over the, over the summer, many of our staff have completed quite a bit of professional development. In regards to remote learning and utilizing the, the various platforms that we'll be using principally the Google platform. At this point, I'd like to just turn it over to Craig Chalfo for an update on the facilities.
Thanks, Bob. As we've discussed in earlier meetings, we've been waiting for an engineering report from Gail Associates, which we now have in district. Much of it was focused on the foundational information about our, our mechanical systems in, in each building. Their engineers did go through all of the schools to provide us with some detail about the actual mechanical pieces to it. And also provided and reiterated some of the issues that we were aware of around deferred maintenance. And some of the issues that we have discussed earlier around getting rooftop ventilation systems back up and operating. And also working with the individual classroom unit ventilators, which not only bring in fresh air, but will exhaust. Air from the individual classroom. So much of the focus of their, of the actual engineering report was really around preventative maintenance. And, and the work that we should be doing and how we should be strategizing the, the repair and the replacement. Of the systems throughout the district that are currently not working or not working efficiently. You know, we, we've discussed previous that the. Individual classroom unit ventilators, issues that we were having at Memorial and at Reingle. We've worked with our local HVAC company MPC and they've been out and they've been diagnosing and troubleshooting. Some of the issues that we've been seeing. And they were able to, or at least come up with a strategy to bypass the pneumatic systems. That actually drive the mechanical pieces at both Reingle and Memorial. So that we can get the exhaust fans operating again, which have not been operating for quite some time. And the, the study went into great detail of summarizing, you know, what our best practices should be. To address the preventative maintenance issues and, and the deferred maintenance issues that we've been seeing across the district. We know that the, the mechanicals at McKay and at Crocker. And at Pittsburgh High School are in good operating. Peace now and will be continuing to go through them with our local HVAC company to continue to do preventative maintenance. Replace filters when they are, when it's necessary in the, and capable of, of accepting a higher MERV rated filter. As we've discussed in the past too, and the potential for replacing motors and fans and belts and things along those lines that need to be updated. So that's ongoing. You know, one of the critical shortages right now is to actually access this type of work. This is an excellent time to be in the HVAC industry. You know, there's a lot of work out there that needs to be done in acquiring services to perform some of this work. It is, is an ongoing struggle, along with some of the supply chain issues that we've discussed in the past. Not so much around PPE now that we're able to. Procure the, the required PPE necessary, but now when we get into the mechanical systems. They're finding that some of the parts and replacement parts for some of the ventilators that are used all over, obviously, the Northeast. Or it can be difficult to find. So we're working with our local HVAC company to continue to go through the, the each building. Work on the unit ventilators, assess the rooftop fans and start replacing equipment as quickly as we can. I don't know if anyone has questions about the assessment. This might be a good time to. To stop.
Can you go back to that slide?
Yep.
So one more. Oh, no.
No, that, that was the first.
All right. So where, you were just looking at the schools. We were just looking at the schools.
The next slide.
Okay, so these, when it says current projects. So the, you had just said a minute ago, I think, that. Somehow the rooftop ventilators at Memorial and Reingle are working now? Is that what?
No. So there's two different systems to think about. We've got our rooftop ventilation. Systems that will actually be ventilating for your common areas, the gymnasiums, the cafeterias, the hallways, bathrooms. Areas aside from the classrooms. The majority of the classrooms are actually, the fresh air is brought in through a ventilator, at least at Memorial and Reingle. And then exhausted through a similar ventilator on the opposite side of the room. One is bringing fresh air and the other one is exhausting that air. And we've discussed in the past that, and, and I don't know. How long ago it was, but for some reason that the, and I'm assuming, you know, when we think about pneumatics and we think about air pressure. And the ability to have multiple leaks, which then decrease the, the efficiencies of the actual system. And at, at some point, they're actually taken offline because they weren't operating the way that they needed to. Our local HVAC contractor was going through them last week. And has kind of come up with a way to bypass those pneumatics so that we can get those, the individual classroom ventilators working. So that they can exhaust from the classroom as well. So that's the two separate pieces. One is doing the exhausting from the classroom where the rooftop ventilators are more for your common areas throughout the building.
So what effect does it have when windows are open? Does that throw off the evaluation? Does that? Change Eva, like I.
I think, you know, the introduction of fresh air is, is something that is, has been part of the guidelines right from the very beginning. And that can either be done through one of two ways. It can either be done through a unit ventilator or through opening windows. And we know at, at Long Joe and at Goodrich Academy, really, the introduction of fresh air is by opening windows. To introduce that into the classrooms, into the common spaces. So that the additional fresh air can't hurt. I'm not sure if that answered your question, though.
Well, I guess the, just where, where I work, we, people were told. Not to open windows because the in and out system functions better. In moving fresh air when it's not. When they don't have windows open. So I was kind of curious. I walked by McKay the other day and every window was open. So I, it just seems like, it seems like I hear one thing and then I hear the exact opposite in some other environment, so.
Right. And, and I really think, Gina, depends on the type of system and how modern that particular system may be. I, I would agree that in some cases, it probably throws the balance off by opening windows when your system is working efficiently. In the way that it should be. You know, now in the majority of our older buildings, that's, you know, the best way to introduce fresh air is by opening those windows. And again, that the, the assessment went into great detail around these filtration, the MERV filters. And when they can be used, when they are recommending for them to be used and when not to. Because they can't throw the balance of a whole system off as well. I think there was one more slide there, Bob. So again, and, and this is just to reiterate, and this goes back to something that we've been saying, I think, for a good chunk of the, for the summer. And after speaking with, whether it's the DPH or the engineers from Gail or their subcontractors in our local HVAC. There's no single strategy that we can employ that's going to mitigate the chances of some type of, of an infection. It really is a matter of combining all of the social distancing or physical distancing. Good hygiene habits, wearing a mask, making sure that if somebody is symptomatic or not feeling well, that they don't go to school. So it's really a combination of all these different systems to help mitigate the chances of having issues as we move forward. You know, obviously, we talked about the increased outside airflow, introducing air, using the outdoors whenever possible. And we know that we can here during the fall and during the warmer temperatures, that's going to become difficult. and during the warmer temperatures. That's going to become difficult as we get into the winter months, obviously. And then really looking at the maintenance of those mechanical systems and making sure that they're working the way that they were designed to and efficiently. But I think the important piece to this is to make sure that we're understanding that it's kind of this building of a culture of awareness, responsibility, in that we're all taking this very seriously, which I know that we are. I've seen at least one study that was shared, and this goes back to the air change rates that were recommended. You know, again, the ASHRAE standards are two, and that's how often the air in a room is changed. And I've seen those as high as six to 12. In the study that was brought to our attention was the rate of six would be necessary if you were in one classroom that was fully occupied for six hours without masks. So that's just to put things in perspective, that if we were not paying attention to the social and physical distancing and decreasing or keeping the density of folks in a particular area, if we weren't wearing masks, if we weren't doing all the health and hygiene and safety precautions that we were, then only relying on your HVAC system, you know, would really be where those numbers of air exchange rates would be going up. But when we're combining everything together, it's really, again, it goes back to that there is no single strategy that's going to work, that we have to be very mindful of all of our responsibilities to take this very seriously. And as Mr. Curry mentioned earlier, is look at the statistics and track the data. You know, we have one current inactive case in the city of Pittsburgh right now. We understand that we have employees that come in from other communities, which, you know, you have to pay attention to that as well. So I just wanted to reiterate, it is really the importance of no one single strategy. It's combining everything.
Craig, could I ask another thing? So did you just, when you were talking about the air change rates study, is that a study that you could share with us? And is there a plan for us to have a building subcommittee meeting to go over the Gail report?
Yep, we can absolutely do that. And I can share, it was a single slide. It was, it was on the ASHRAE website, and it depicted one scenario, so it wasn't really a study. It was really just if you had one classroom full of students for five hours with no masks, then it would be required to maintain a level of safety that you would have to have six air exchanges during that timeframe. Obviously, we've shortened our window of classes. We've decreased the density of folks that would be, or students that would be in any particular room, and we are wearing masks. So it was just kind of a, for instance, as it was more of a study. So if we weren't doing any other mitigation strategies, then that would be required. But if you enter, if you, if you do all the other physical distancing, wearing a mask, you know, paying attention to symptoms and, you know, working to help in safety strategies, then that's a huge factor. And that's been reiterated even right from DPH, right from the beginning.
Bob, we're having difficulty hearing you.
Okay, I said that brings the return to school update, the superintendent's report to closure here. We have a couple budget items, really just one budget item to accept the Innovation Pathway Implementation Grant, or I believe it's that credit at fourteen thousand.
Yeah, it's the Innovation Pathway Implementation Grant. It's to be accepted for twenty thousand four hundred dollars, and that's for Pittsburgh High School to strengthen the career education for the high school students and complement the grants that we have there now.
And I guess at this point, I'd like to turn the policy item over to Mr. Horgan, the Policy Subcommittee Meeting, the meeting before the Full School Committee Meeting, and a
I couldn't hear the end of that, but it sounded like the, I know the microphone got passed to me, so I'll just take it from here. So hi, everybody, and thanks, Bob. So with the theme tonight, we just had a face mask policy that we had today, and that's the only policy before you today. So it's policy number fifty seven zero seven. It's a very simple and straightforward policy. It's mandating that everyone wear masks. Do we want to, is Pam on the call? Will she be going over it in detail, Bob, or will Roanne? I can't hear your audio, Bob.
Yeah, Bob, your audio stopped working.
I see people at a time on my screen here. I, Roanne is here.
Yep, him and I are both here.
Yeah, right here.
Oh, Pam, I couldn't see her. You're in the dark. So yeah, Pam, could you lead us through this and just kind of the top lines?
Sure, let me just pull it back up.
Would it make sense to share the policy on the screen for everybody to see, both here and at home who might be watching?
Sure. Oh, actually, I don't know if I have screen sharing privileges, but I'm going to try. Hosts disabled screen. Oh, you are now a co-host. Okay. All right. Success, making it look easy. All right. So here's the face covering policy. If that helps Roanne and Pam.
So are you looking to have this read through or just explained?
I guess just the top, I guess just the top line. So, you know, we're requiring everyone has a face mask, right? And I guess I'll just go over, I'll go, we'll just go over the, I guess, the highlights paragraph by paragraph, and then we'll do the first reading. So the definition of a face covering, of our face mask, we're not requiring students to have certain grade levels of face masks. If it covers the nose and the mouth, then that's considered a face mask. We're asking that everybody on school grounds and school transportation has that. So if a student tries to get on the school bus and they don't have a mask, the school bus driver will have one of the blue, good, I don't know the actual name for those types of masks, but you know, what I'm talking about, they'll have those to hand out. So then, following the CDC guidelines, the exemptions are when you're excused to take off the mask if you're having trouble breathing, if you're unconscious incapacitated, if you can't remove the mask without assistance. They'll not be required in situations where when six feet social distancing is enforced during mask breaks, so the students will have, you know, designated times throughout the class, throughout their classes or throughout the day, where they can take the mask off and catch a breather. If they're having a snack or drinking, they'll be able to take off the masks. That was one of my questions, if what the policy is going to be during lunchtime. But if you guys remember, the students won't be having any lunch, so eating and drinking is just talking about snacks if they have it, and when they're outside. In addition, talking about possible exemptions, so we have, if they have a known or unknown medical or behavioral challenge, making it unsafe to wear the mask or face covering, then we're requesting that a written note from the physician accommodates that exemption. So a simple waiver or a signature from a parent won't do. We need a signed waiver from a physician. We're asking that the students provide their own masks from their own families, staff as well. However, the district will supply disposable face coverings for individuals who arrive at the building, or like I said before, aboard the school buses without one. And then to the enforcement of the policy, if students are in violation of the policy, we're good, so for the procedure of it, the building principal will consult with the parent or the guardian to determine whether they should have an exemption, or the student might be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such a time as they can comply with wearing a mask, or until we no longer require them to wear masks. And then for, if the staff violate this policy, it's going to be handled in the same manner as other violations of the policy for school committee. And if visitors, not staff or students, but if visitors try to enter the facilities or the schools without a mask, they'll be denied entry. And this policy is just going to be until we rescind it. So this will be active until we determine that it's no longer required. And there's no kind of guideline or any roadmap for one that's going to be, that's kept very vague. It's going to be at the school committee's discretion when to take this policy away. So with that, any questions? Yeah, Jean?
I didn't see language in there, Aiden, about neck gaiters. Like, I'd like to see language that says a neck gaiter isn't considered a mask, because according to the language that you guys have here, it says anything, a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn. And technically, those gaiters could be considered that, but like, the studies that I've seen say that they're kind of worse.
Yeah. So that wasn't, that wasn't brought up, and I'd be interested, I guess, to kind of give the mic to Pam Rivers if she has any notes about that, too. But I think my first thought is just, for all the mask requirements, I think there's also a fiscal policy, I guess, a fiscal obstacle if we're requiring students to have the ninety-five masks or specific masks.
I'm not talking about that, but I, I'm just talking about
scarf that they pull up. I'm not, I'm not sure.
So, so right, yeah, so right now, according to the guidelines, that neck gaiters are not part of the guidelines. However, it has come up with Board of Health meetings across the state, and it actually is something that's on the agenda to be addressed at tomorrow afternoon's meeting. So going forward, I will have more information on that, but right now, they're leaning to not have the neck gaiters included, but because it's, you know, still a discussion item, we did not include it in this particular policy to date.
Aiden?
Yeah, Rosemary.
I did not actually see the words known or unknown as you read.
Oh, this might be a different, I think the words that, the policy that I'm sharing right now might be the policy that the original, that Bob sent out. So forgive me for that. I think I read the known or unknown.
You said it, but
For context, for context, for everyone that's listening, on the requirement, so in addition, masks are, for the exemptions, rather, in addition, masks or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical, behavioral, or other challenges making it unsafe to wear the mask. In the subcommittee, we changed that language to a known or unknown medical or behavioral other challenge in case it be diagnosed later on. The, it was, Rosemary's content, that was more, I guess, compassionate language.
That's in the, that's in the copy that got emailed to us.
Okay, that's good. So that's the right one got sent out.
Thank you.
Well, going back to the gaiters, I think that's a really good point, Jean, and I didn't really, I didn't think of that, to be honest, and that wasn't brought up in the meeting at all. So I would be, if that does come down in the meeting tomorrow, I'd kind of, I'm curious as to what everyone else thinks, whether we should have that as an addition later on, if that decision from, that gaiters aren't included as sufficient, that we make that a specific exemption here. I'm not sure.
Maybe, so Pam, who makes the recommendation that those are not appropriate? What organization?
Let me just get the reference I have.
Because maybe it's saying approved face coverings through that particular organization.
Yeah. Gaiters does not meet the Department of Public Health mask up recommendations right now.
So if we say face covering is approved by the Department of Public Health?
Yes.
That would cover any changes that they make over the course of the pandemic, right? So if they, with another, if some company comes out with another creative face mask that then the Department of Public Health decides is not appropriate, they would consider that. So maybe adding that language in there would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the focus when we wrote this one was, you know, not, I think, the fiscal barrier, if anything, of just getting K95 masks or the regulated, you know, masks that healthcare workers use so that people were able to use the homemade masks. I think that was kind of the focus of how this was worded.
Right, but some of that homemade stuff isn't, isn't effective, and
But I It's more or less like, you know, they focus on two ply and masks that are two ply and secured with either ties and or ear loops. Doesn't have that.
Well, the Board of, the Board of Health recommendation, like, I know that the other kind that some people have thought were popular, like with those valves, those aren't, are those, I think, I think Roanne's terminology could work here if those are also not considered appropriate, because they, they actually aren't, they're, they're worse, too.
So I guess to change the wording, do we, do we want to just add a specific exemption? Do we want to make it more universal and say the mask, the face coverings have to be in compliance with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health? Or do we just want to add, gaiters don't count?
Well, I like, personally, I like Roanne's recommendation where it would read a face covering approved by the Board of Health, or that covers the nose and mouth, I mean.
Agreed. I think we should get rid of that sentence and just put in accordance with Board of Health. Any other committee members have any thoughts on this? Okay.
This is Jim. Go ahead, Sally, I'll wait.
No, I'm just going to say, the theme is, you know, follow what the experts say, and citing the experts will make it, you know, much tidier. I think we all, you know, people know what a mask is, but citing this is a mask. And again, when we come time to, you know, returning, kids returning to school, that will be another, another issue and probably more, you know, more publicity to remind people that a mask is a mask, not, you know, a collar and the rest of it. So that's all my thought. Just cite those experts. We got them, use them.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
I, I think I agree with Roanne, if you can say masks, face coverings approved by the Massachusetts Public Health Department or wherever their exact name is, is a good way to say it. I think it's still important, though, to include in the policy that the mask must cover the nose and the mouth, because I see people on a regular basis who don't cover their nose.
Yeah.
And I guess the other thing I'd like to know, if you can scroll back up where it says, "School Grounds", I'm assuming that also would mean, for example, I know one of the fall sports that can be played is field hockey. That means people coming to a field hockey game would have to wear a face mask. Is that correct? Visitors, spectators?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, but there's something in the policy somewhere that says that it's not about outside.
Or outside, no, that's actually true. No, or while outside, while eating or drinking or while outside.
That, that makes me a little nervous on that, but. So to Jim's point, I don't know, would that be something that could be enforced then?
Well, I'm also wondering if MIAA is going to come out with their own protocols around each sport and events as well. As things roll out, they're probably going to make some recommendations about crowd sizes and what are requirements for people to attend any event.
Yeah, I'm kind of
Put out a line that would say, you know, the district would follow any MIAA recommendations for any sporting events.
Yeah, I might just suggest that we get rid of while outside and not replace this bullet point with anything, and then maybe as a separate paragraph, we'll just say, we'll be complying with MIAA. So I'll have to rely on my predecessor's guidance here. Sally, can we make these edits now? Or is this going back to the subcommittee? We'll make these edits and bring it back to the general meeting in October?
Well, this needs to be passed sooner rather than later, and we are moving this through, through to a second reading. My suggestion is with, with those amendments that you're, you're mentioning, that, you know, we can make a motion to pass the, pass the policy as written with discussed amendments, and then Patty turns it around and gets it back to us for our October meeting. But then it, you know, it, we're voting on, we want to get this passed today, so. we're not, we're not rewiring the whole engine. We're just um adding these item, you know.
So so thank you. So let's let's clarify uh the amendments that we're making and then move forward with the vote. So just to be clear, up here, a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings. And we want to make sure that we're including that this face covering is in compliance with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and their definition of what, you know, a face mask is. Okay. That's one. And two, we're gonna get rid of while outside as a blanket exemption for the mask policy. And instead, add a clause here that says any any outdoor activity conducted on public grounds will be in compliance with MIAA or Department of Public Health standards. Seeing nodding heads, any dissent?
Aiden, I have a problem that you're using the incorrect um policy. And the updated, can you pull up the updated one and uh do the same thing that you just did?
Uh, or yeah, I mean, this is not much of a change.
No, no.
As a known or unknown medical, so that's the only change that was there, Rowan, which is those words.
Yes, I know, but yes, okay, good. You got it there. Aiden, um I thought from the policy meeting this afternoon that the intention tonight was to pass it and forego a second reading.
That's correct. That was the intention. That was going to be the recommendation that we pass, that we skip the second reading in tonight's meeting. Uh just have a first reading, put this on the books. And that's what I'm recommending to the committee. Well, with these changes, with the with the written amendments that we have from this meeting, and acknowledging that we have the edits from the subcommittee meeting this afternoon, I I recommend that we um make a motion to move forward the first reading and skip the second. I think that's the right official wording of that motion, but
So I so make that motion and or did you just make the motion and I can second it?
I'll make the motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Thanks, Mr. Merritt.
Do we want to take this up when we take up the other action items? Suspension of the rules, is that what you're asking for? So it doesn't require a second reading? That'll be a separate vote, right?
Correct.
Right. I didn't want to, I didn't want to do this. Let's do it. Let's do it now.
Let's do it now.
Action item twenty-one dash zero nine.
Motion to approve the first reading and forego the second?
With proposed amendments.
Proposed amendments.
Right.
I second that.
I heard a second, okay. All in favor, let's let's do that individually. Ms. Greenleys, if you would call a roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Di Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Yes. Unanimous.
Thank you. So we're moving to accept the first reading with amendments of the of the face mask policy. And all in favor, an individual vote, please, Ms. Greenleys.
May I clarify, this is to suspend the second vote?
I thought that's what we did in the first vote.
Okay.
Okay. So this is now accepting
The policy.
Policy as amended, correct.
Okay.
Which which means this will go in effect immediately, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Roll call.
Yes. Mayor Di Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds. I've lost Mrs. Reynolds. Oh, she's muted.
Rosemary, you're muted. Yeah, little red line, yeah. Oh.
You can do a thumbs up, right?
It's dark. Can't even see.
It's a five to one vote.
There she is. There she is. Mrs. Reynolds is a thumbs up.
Rosemary, you weren't muted. God love you, you know.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Greenleys.
Yes, you're welcome. We are unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we are we continuing with the action items? Is that the wish of the committee?
Are we there?
Are we there? Are we on those? Yeah, right.
We're at action items, and I would ask that the uh there are only, I think, a couple few action items remaining.
Three.
Uh done individually, because we need to submit the school committee meeting minutes from September second to the MSBA, and they request a singular vote on that.
All right, uh motion to accept uh action item twenty-one dash oh seven, accept the meetings of the school minutes of the school committee meeting held on September second, twenty twenty.
The motion.
Second.
And seconded to accept twenty-one dash zero seven. All in favor, an individual vote count, Ms. Greenleys, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Di Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Yes, we are unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, action item next action, twenty-one dash zero eight, accept the F I twenty-one Innovation Pathway Implementation Grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars to strengthen career education for Pittsburgh High School students. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion made and motion made to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, individual vote, please.
Mayor Di Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Thank you. Our last and final twenty-one dash one zero, accept the donation of the City United Church in the amount of one thousand dollars to provide Pittsburgh High School families with food during the family fun drive by. I hear a motion.
Motion to accept the grant money.
I hear a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, individual vote, please, Ms. Greenleys. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor Di Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Yes, we are unanimous.
Thank you. We now move into executive session for the purpose of negotiations that will require a vote. Ms. Greenleys, vote to enter executive session.
Yes, sir. Mayor Di Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
I think Eva Kelly wants to say something. Oh, is she saying bye? Okay. Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, we now require a vote to enter executive session for the purpose of negotiations.
Only to return.
Only to return to adjourn.
So move that we go into executive sessions.
Okay. Do we need, did we, didn't we just vote on it? No?
We just did.
We just did, okay.
That's my understanding.
We are in executive session. Seven twenty.
Please wait for confirmation.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Pam and Rowan. Anyone else that worked on the face mask policy? I appreciate it.